We're calling to agenda, uh, calling to agenda, calling to order, uh, six eighteen. And our first topic is secondary transportation proposal. And this is a follow-up from a board presentation in February. I think Joan, um, gave us this review, uh, Steve. And the, um, the presentation included some recommendations and we wanted to have a work session discussion with board members to make sure that all of our answers, that we fully understood. The topic, um, in the material, in the, um, board docs, there's a page with the recommendations, um, actually a few pages of recommendations.
Right.
And, um, I would just open it up to board members if you have questions about those recommendations. Do we have concerns? If so, um, we've got administration team here to answer those.
So if you're looking for those, they start on page five.
Yeah.
In the attachment.
Eliminate discretionary busing but maintain attendance support busing for Southeast Iowa City to Southeast and City and ensure pay to ride is available for students in North Central attendance area. Increase school bus options for Liberty students. Add the topic of public transportation, which is going to be at the joint entities committee. They broached that already in the last one. And so, um, this will continue to be a conversation. I know City, or Iowa City's doing, redoing their entire bus route, um, project and, and that's a good point for us to, um, engage in that. Questions or the things that board members have needs for more information on? Because I think what we want to do is bring this back to a future board meeting, not the twenty-seventh, obviously that agenda's set, but, um, the first one in April?
If the board, uh, as a group concurs, we could certainly add that. We've got enough time because we haven't published that agenda yet.
Okay.
I know this is future agenda, but if we're going to the new format for agendas, then the second meeting would be the one where we take actions.
That's right, actually. So that would, wow, that would end up being?
It would be the end of April. So, yeah, if you're okay with doing it.
I mean, the main thing is that we would just designate it as an action item, that we've had an opportunity to have a work session discussion. Any further comments, questions could be raised, um, so that we've been through that process.
I am.
I feel like there's some sense of urgency to get this moving. I think, or you had a-
Yeah, so it'd either be April, March twenty-seventh or April tenth would be the, uh, the action.
I would go with March twenty-seventh because we haven't discussed changing the agendas yet anyway, so.
Yeah, no, that's true. It's coming up.
I'm just saying, it does not start March twenty-seventh.
We already have some agenda, and that's actually, I had replied earlier because the question was out there. We have some action items, uh, already on the docket.
For the twenty-seventh?
So they'll be in action.
So we could add this.
Heading on there. So there's room to add it.
Okay, so I, I didn't hear what you said, Paul.
What I'm saying, we haven't had the discussion to change the agenda items yet, so I would feel comfortable putting it on the forty-seventh.
Oh, okay. You would feel comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what Steve just said was out there.
Yep.
Tech days, on the fourth Tuesday anyway, that's the new way you're gonna do it, is you do, uh, actions at that part of it, this is, we can start an actionable meeting.
The, the reason I felt some urgency for it was because we're right in the middle of budget season and this has potential to, um, provide some of the savings that we could put into that deficit that we know we're going to have.
So I'm not hearing any questions, concerns about this particular set of recommendations and so we're comfortable taking this to an action item on March twenty-seventh? Yes?
Yes.
Seeing that around the table, great. Thank you for that.
And so, just to be clear for the community's sake, so the action item would be around discretionary busing and attendance support busing for secondary students.
Okay.
So what I'll do then is I will work with the team to make sure that they use this language. It's on the bottom of page five, to write the motions up and have those placed in board docs.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Um, next topic is attendance area development discussion. Um, we've got some materials. I think we had these materials in our last work session, but they had just been published, so we didn't have a chance to really sink in and review and have questions. Um, I know we were anxiously awaiting, uh, this information to help guide discussions on, uh, FMP, potentially accelerating the FMP and having that discussion, I think, in April, May. Um, this also was some inputs that we were looking for as we wanted to talk about, um, further work around balancing elementary schools. So I think this set of data informs, uh, those two initiatives. So I would, um, open it up for comments or questions from board members on the materials presented here. There's really, I mean, there's nothing really to present, I mean, I'm looking, Steve, did you have anything to add?
No, there, and I, just maybe a, a couple of clarification points as you work through it. So the, uh, there's two, uh, attachments. Um, the one is the executive summary. Uh, so if you go through there, uh, we ask cooperative strategies to pull out some of the key points in there. Um, one of the things I think is important to note is that, uh, those agenda, those agenda, those attendance areas, um, as they're set right now, obviously don't include the changes that we've made recently to the Penn, uh, and, uh, Lincoln, uh, attendance areas, North Wickham. Um, so that's not reflected in here. Uh, and so you look at Penn and it'll tell you on that, uh, page five that they've, they're projected with three hundred and fourteen new kids. That's the old Penn attendance area, so just FYI on that. Um, and then you've got the very long one, the seventy-five page one, that's the full build-out, um, report. Uh, and, uh, one of the things maybe that's important to look at as you go through there is that they've got high-low, uh, projections and so you can see, could be as, as few as three years, it could be as long as twelve years, and then they're looking in the middle and saying, based on, um, the trends in the past, as we try to lean forward and project the future, we see that build out in seven years or whatever it is, so.
So on the, uh, the, the, the last page of the executive center, uh, summary, uh, the timeline there, uh, the old boundaries reused?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And, um, why did it stop at two thousand and sixteen when we, I assume we could've used two thousand and seventeen data?
Um, and it's actually stops at, yeah.
September of sixteen.
And I'm, uh, I'm not sure because I know, when you look into the, when you're in the, the larger one, they've got, I think that one actually shows the data up through seventeen.
Okay, well-
So I'm not sure why on there it has sixteen.
I'm apologizing because I'm just going off the executive one. I haven't dug into that one.
I'll have to look and see.
I think they're doing it, uh, this is purely my speculation, it seems like it's calendar year though, so they went through the full calendar of sixteen and then in the full thing, they have, uh, up to September of seventeen in there, but it's not a full year, so the numbers aren't doing it. So it's not aligned with our school years and since they started looking at it-
Well, that could be because as you're going through the main report, they've got, they've got both in there. There's, there's some references to school year and now, you're right, I see some rest of references to fiscal year in there. So I'd have to look and see if that, if that's the way they did the alignment, Phil, I'm not sure.
And on the, uh, the, uh, executive summary where it has, um, the Iowa City community school student potential, this one?
Which page do you have?
It's just, it's, it's the executive summary-
Looks like page three.
For the page on student summary.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just going by the hard copy, I apologize, I don't know.
Is there a page number?
I think it's third page, executive summary, it says at the top.
Yeah.
Executive summary, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
When you look at, you know, and they're, they're going, uh, potential units remaining. Uh, when you look at Iowa City, there's two thousand and forty-four and in nine through twelve, it's saying, uh, student potential, a hundred and forty-two. And you look at North Liberty, there's only two hundred and, well, there's two hundred more, but it's significantly larger number, uh, was, was there a different yield factor unit?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is and you'll see that in the, in the, um, full report. So they, they look at what the yield rates are for similar type neighborhoods in each of the municipalities and we tend to get more kids per housing unit up here in North Liberty than we're getting in Iowa City. Uh, and so that results in a change in those numbers when they come through.
Okay. And on the, uh, let's see, on the multi, on the multifamily units, aren't those gonna, uh, are you gonna have more students with a single family unit or a multifamily unit?
I think it depends on the, uh, area that you're building in because I know that, uh, at least when we had some of those earlier conversations, you know, a multi, uh, a multi-unit structure in downtown Iowa City's gonna yield fewer kids than a multi-unit structure out here, uh, in, you know, off of Penn Street. So I think those yields are, are differential based on their geographic location.
Okay.
Because single family is home, but multifamily is everything else.
Right.
So, it's the, Chauncey Towers is listed as multifamily.
So what impact, I mean, I don't know the answer to this question. Do we believe there's an impact on the FMP with any of this new data that came into this, into this, uh, report?
Not right-
We're bound to do what passed with the bond.
Yeah.
I mean, that language is specific, um, and so I just don't know what latitude either we have to make adjustments based on the data.
I, I don't see any necessary adjustments to it right now. The one thing that when we sat down as exec team and, and looked through this and said, what does this say to us? One of the things that we did talk about was, um, just like we looked at up here in, in the North Liberty area is should we be looking for additional parcels of property in other areas of the school district? Um, we had a lengthy conversation about what about Southeast Iowa City? As you look at the yields and the potential build-out here and you think about the area down by Terry True Blood and the rate that that's building out, should we be looking forward? Because just like up here, fourteen, fifteen acre parcels are going to be harder and harder to find, so should we actually start that conversation of, of looking around the corner and, and determining whether or not there are additional parcels that we should start to investigate? Um, so that was probably the biggest takeaway for us when we looked through here was to just try to be proactive, to set future boards up so that they're able to make good decisions when the time comes.
Mm-huh. So I'll ask the group, um, we, we asked the administrative, administrative team to kind of provide a timeline of activities, uh, for us to consider. If we were to pass, um, accelerated FMP, we would need to act, I think, late April or early May. And so, um, you know, we, we agreed for a few design projects to proceed in an accelerated fashion. We did, we held off on accelerating the full, because I think we had questions still. And so, my question to board members is, what other questions do we need to have answered to help us move forward? Because I think we're committed to have a vote, whether we vote yes or no. I think we need to have, um, bring closure to the acceleration question. And so my, my question to you all is, what else do you need to inform that discussion? What other dialogue do we have to have? Not necessarily tonight, but what can we queue up for subsequent work sessions leading up to that vote?
I mean, my question, biggest question's capacity and frankly, here at Liberty is my, are, are we gonna hit capacity before that, even the acceleration plan kicks in? So is this something that needs to be pushed out? And then I think the other-
Is what sometimes-
Liberty, like-
The next, phase three.
Oh, they, I see. Got it, got it, got it.
Do we change the order to bring this up because we're gonna need that capacity sooner? And then we know we need preschool capacity, um, in Corvo, I mean, in that area, you know, it's the only one with a waiting list. Um, and then if we're thinking about educational impact, I mean, pre-K is-
Put Scott on the hot seat and ask him what he feels for capacity here at Liberty.
Cause he runs away.
So, so I know that the stage three of Liberty's on the FMP. I used to have that chart memorized, but remind me on pre-K capacity, what did we, what's on the FMP in support of that?
Well, it'll be at Kirkwood and then just, that would be the moving Kirkwood ahead-
Okay.
-to get that capacity sooner.
Okay.
So those are my two sort of hot areas that, that I weren't a part of the, the acceleration plan that seem, um, and I'm, you know, so I guess what is this data, is it?
Yeah, and, and maybe just a reminder for those folks, if you haven't read through that, so there is enough flexibility in the language that's in the, um, facility master plan that for any of the projects that you're considering as a board, if you want to make sure that preschool is a part of that planning process, that's something that you can dictate as we go through there because, um, if it says we're gonna work on, you know, George Washington Elementary School, um, and there are things that we know we want to do in there, but there's the latitude for you as a board to look at that and say, and the plan needs to include two preschool rooms. We've, we've got the flexibility to look at that because the purpose of the classroom is not defined.
Right. So, but the language now says we're adding capacity at Kirkwood.
Right, and so-
And we can agree-
Right, so you could look at that and say, as part of that, we would like to see some of that additional classroom space dedicated to pre-K. Then, then we take that then into the planning process.
Okay.
So when we bring something back to you, it reflects what you want us to do as part of that.
Well, I would say when we're in the, uh, planning stages, especially on any, the future development here at Liberty, that we look at, uh, ag education and what opportunities we would have here, facility-wise, going forward. And I guess in the secondary level at all schools, but especially here, since we will be putting in, uh, quite a bit, we'd have a great opportunity to, uh, to build-
Whole new wing, basically, a little-
You know, and, and, and I'll, I'll also put in a, a, a plug to look at going up as, 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 as well as going out, as far as building up instead of building wider.
So another piece that I would just add, and I don't have it either in front of me, so I can't remember the order, but-
I used to have this memorized.
Borlog is another one where, um, I see some growth there.
Mm-huh.
It's not as much as there is in, you know, some other areas, but I do see some growth. Um, it's, let's see, you know, I have to find that elementary.
The accelerated plan would move Borlog up three years, it would move Lemmy up three years, it would move Bourn up two years, and Kirkwood up two years. It would have brought Liberty up two years, Wickham up a year.
But in, in the accelerated plan, where does Borlog fit? Is it in the third year or the second year?
Well, accelerated would've started in twenty twenty.
So that'd be-
If it doesn't start then, then it would be twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah.
No, I'm not- We should bring it up even further.
Bring it up soon.
I'm talking about within the accelerated plan, not compared to the prior FMP.
Do we need to bring Borlog up earlier in the accelerated plan?
So just, just a couple of notes as you're thinking through that. So remember that we've got a couple of issues that we look at as we try to thread all those together. One is how many projects can we handle at once? And then, um, which projects can we do that are not dependent on using, uh, the multiplex modulators? Um, so you think about, uh, a Borlog or a Lemmy, a couple of the reasons that we looked at potentially being able to accelerate those, obviously the Liberty, uh, addition on this end, is you can actually do those without disrupting the students because they happen kind of at the end of the hallway, if you will. If you, for those of you who remember the Van Allen addition, right, we just kind of put up the, the wall at the end and say, don't go through this door, and then we're able to build out the classrooms on the other end and it doesn't actually impact anything that's going on in the school. Um, so some of those projects are a little bit easier to do than others because they're not as disruptive. And then, uh, we can look at those and then we can look at it and say, okay, now how many of those can we manage at once, type of thing?
And so that would be my question, is, is Borlog, is it feasible to move that up even further in the accelerated plan than what it was?
Yeah, I don't know that-
Further than twenty twenty would be like they, you would've needed, had the design going, right?
Yeah, I think we'd have to be underway with that right now.
So is it, yeah, that's what I don't have.
Yep.
I need to just find it.
Yeah.
I don't know where it fits.
I mean, that's what I just, I just, the design would start in twenty nineteen.
Right.
Construction would start in twenty twenty, which is the last starting of all construction if you accelerated everything. Everything would start in twenty, no later than twenty twenty if you accelerated twenty.
And if I'm remembering correctly from that initial discussion, one of the biggest pieces was, um, where some of those projects that's already underway fell as far as the budget, that that was a concern. So, um, that's something that Craig and Dwayne would need to compare with, with where all this is landing between design and construction, like with Longfellow, where they're falling within what was already, um-
Lincoln?
Yeah.
Plans for Lincoln moving on it?
That was already, um, allocated versus if they're going over the estimate for being under, how confident they are in those estimates.
So one of the things that, that Kim and I are working on with Paul and Dwayne is, okay, if the end game is the board needs to, uh, take a vote at some point, when is that drop dead date here? And then backing into it, where are the presentation and discussion and things that need to take place so that you can ask the questions, get the answers, and if there are further opportunities or need to have further discussion and more investigation in between, that they've got time to get that done? So we're working on that and you'll see that in future agendas, so we've got that all laid out for you.
We don't have much time.
No, we don't.
Like, let me ask this question on Liberty, would it even be possible to move it up further than what's in the accelerated plan?
I don't know that.
But it would start in twenty twenty with the design phase starting next to-
So you probably couldn't start it in twenty nineteen.
I think we, I think we'd probably pass the line.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's any ability to condense that, so I'd have to-
Well, unless it's traded out, something. Could you tell me-
I don't think you could trade it out because it's-
Which, which board agenda was that on? So I can just pull it up a little bit? What's that?
If you just search it, when you go to board docs and you hit search, accelerated plan.
It was actually on a whole bunch of agendas. We had it at board meetings and work sessions.
In respect to Liberty, I think that it probably could be squished a little bit because we, we know what we're doing here, right? We're closing off the end and it's going to look very similar to what we have, so I don't know that you're gonna need a full design process. But my question, I guess I'm gonna look at it more bigger picture because I'm looking at this report and I see all of this dark red up here on the north end. And that tells me we need stuff that's not in our plan as soon as we can get it. And, you know, has been brought up numerous times to me by various community members, you accelerate, you save money, you're not really saving money to put in a pot to go spend somewhere, you're saving money for taxpayers.
Right.
In my head, I'm working out, that means potentially you'd be able to bond out again sooner to-
Do more.
And I, I just kind of want to wrap my head around, what are the chances? Because that's what I see as our need, is more capacity up here. So how does accelerating do that? And also, on a, on a slightly different note, as we talked in our, um, operations meeting, we talked about playgrounds being a big thing and how we want to move forward and what can we do there? Saving money in construction is going to help with that, and so I see how acceleration does that. So can we just kind of, some of those high-level things?
Sure, so maybe just a couple of quick, uh, feedback pieces and then you guys can discuss that. But, uh, so, uh, obviously that's one of the reasons that we brought you the idea that we need to secure additional property. So even though we didn't have this yet, we kind of knew, because based on the research that we were doing to help cooperative strategies put this together, we were seeing some of this data. And so we said, okay, we know what's gonna be next, which is it's gonna come in like this, and like you said, it's gonna be marooned right up here at the top, so we need to make sure that we're prepared so that you can make good decisions when that time comes. So that's why we went out and, and went through that process and started engaging in that, that discussion. Um, and then the other one obviously is that, um, save is still in play, uh, in the state legislature and it's, we're probably realistically, you know, more than six weeks to the end of the session, they really want to get out on time, so I think they will. Um, it's, at least from what I'm hearing from the legislators, still very much in play. Um, and one of the things that that does for us as a district is, uh, puts us in a position where not having to go out for another bond, you may be able to do some projects in parallel with those that are already bonded for. Um, so if you look at it and say, hey, we don't have anything else planned up here and I'm really worried about what this is gonna look like, you have the opportunity, if that passes, to say, given the property that we secured and the growth that we see, what else might we want to consider to address that? So we're trying to put-
But then we run into, how many projects can we do at one time?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's our- Yeah, construction capacity is a finite.
It is, yeah. But at least then you would have the ability to look at those and figure out how they play with each other. So you're right, in the end, construction capacity winds up being a, a big issue.
And the save, uh, legislation that's, that is going forward, is it gonna require a new RPS vote?
Uh, depends on which version winds up going through.
Sure, oh, they're not to that-
Yeah, one of, one of the versions that's out there would not. If you've got an existing revenue purpose statement in place, you'd be able to run that out. Um, one of the other ones requires a vote on a new one, so I think it depends on what gets through conference committee. Maybe I should just ask for us, so the revenue purpose statement is what gives the board the authority to spend the money? So we go out to vote for that.
So it sounds like we want to get an update from Dwayne on just kind of where are we with the current plans, budget, you know, status.
And construction capacity too, I think is one of the one that I, I heard.
Um, and would that be at a work session, a board meeting?
We could do that.
Work session?
I think from, let me see how quickly he can have that ready to go and then I think we may look at what our various venues might be for him to deliver that. Um, getting it to you sooner rather than later?
I think sooner.
I know, you know, when we talked about this board table, Dwayne and Craig asked if, you know, board members had specific things to tell them so they could kind of work out a plan.
Yeah.
And, and I know they came and asked me what my specific thoughts were and I didn't really have any, honestly. I wanted to keep the door open for others that may have it, so I would ask the other board members, did you guys do that? Did somebody talk to Dwayne and Craig and say, here's what I want you to try and put together, some of the thoughts you had mentioned over there?
I just told him that night about the Kirkwood thing and he said, well, well, you know, cause it has to do with Schimmick? Schimmick, I think they're, that's the, that's the ten-plex switch around.
Right.
And, and Dwayne just, right in that moment was like, I, I think I can put something together and have some ideas.
I think it would be important to, if that's something you, you want to look at as an option, it needs to be reiterated so that it at least is there to look at, otherwise we're gonna-
I've got Kirkwood preschool, Liberty High advanced, Borlog advanced, so if there are other specific things, I can certainly relay those, but those are three that I already have down.
And that's, I'm just, that's just throwing out, the Borlog, I, I mean, I'm just looking at things that could be traded out. Um, Borlog is last in the accelerated plan, so Garner is before that. Could they be flip-flopped?
Sure.
Um, they have about the same number of students that are coming in, but the length of time, I think, is different because, um, in twenty nineteen, Grant is opening.
Yep.
So, um-
Yeah. So Liberty moving up, Kirkwood and then potential Borlog, Garner flip, plus status, budget, uh, and capacity, construction capacity.
Feasibility of it is the-
Yeah, that's huge because clearly we need it. Can we do it?
Right.
Clearly we need more than we've got.
I would also want to know, moving up Liberty, what the impact is gonna be on staff costs, especially going into our budget crunch?
That was, that was something-
Well, that's, the students are here, the students are here.
Yeah, but the students are here and thirty kids a class versus twenty is a lot different because now you've got two, two sections versus one or whatever it is. I understand the students are here, but-
The only good news I would share on that is most likely by the time that opens up, we're climbing out.
So that was crunch, yeah.
Crunch is about two years, right?
Right, so I'm thinking we're-
Yeah, moving, yeah. And, uh, did somebody, anybody remember what the project was at Grant Wood, what we're doing there? Do you have it? Cause as I'm looking at the, um, student analysis, student, you know what I mean? Anyway, um, I see very, you know, comparatively less growth than we would see at Liberty, so I don't know if that's, I know it's a much bigger project for a much smaller project, but if that's something that could be switched out.
I would echo Paul's concern as we look at, you know, a new potential elementary up here, staffing it is, I mean, we're gonna create ourselves, maybe not a bigger crunch as a high school, but- as a high school, but another crunch year or two with staffing.
Our, our elementary additions have been much, we've had it, has been more straightforward for us to absorb those, would be the better way to describe it. Wood is music and art.
Okay, so that's not something that's as critical time wise, so maybe that.
Does that freeze up classroom space or?
It does, yep. So then the two, the music and art rooms will be converted into regular classrooms. So you're adding music art, converting two into regular classrooms.
But I think looking at the student growth analysis is something to consider as we look at that.
I think you also have to consider those schools over there are more, well, Kirkwood is as well, but they're going to have more sections because they have.
RAM.
RAM.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that is a consideration.
And considering the appearance of equity, of moving certain schools up above other schools, I mean, that's just going to be something that some people will see or question. So as a board, we have to keep that in mind as well.
Well, we would.
You know, it's based on the numbers, I get that.
Right, yeah.
But there are some schools dealing with higher.
Yeah, for sure.
That creates other additional educational barriers.
Yeah, I don't think we'd want to do anything that doesn't make sense number wise. If we can't justify it with the report we got, then I think we should keep it where it is.
So you're going to take this feedback, Steve, get with Dwayne, figure out when we're going to have the next conversation? It honestly really should be at the first meeting in April.
Yeah, I, my, what I wrote down was ASAP on there, so.
Yeah, it should be in a discussion in April.
We'll see how quickly we can get that back.
So we'll bring it, just with this new idea of the process, we would bring a discussion ready to vote or bring a discussion to vote?
No, no, we'll, we'll lay out the timeline for you. We know the vote is May, so what we want to do is make sure that we've scripted out a timeline that allows for any presentations that Dwayne thinks he needs to make, so that you're fully up to speed on it, then plenty of time for discussion by the board before any vote happens.
So this could be at the board meeting, we could decide if we need further work session when we're doing agenda setting, based on the questions and the data that we saw from Dwayne, and we could decide to have work session at the second April meeting or the first May meeting.
Or decide we have, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, this gives me a lot. I mean, this is good data that gives me a lot more confidence in any decision that we make, like, wow, we've got, and I think some of what we did assume or kind of projecting.
Best to know, though.
Pretty clear, and wow, do we need.
For me, it's an argument to accelerate.
Well, I, yeah, right.
To get through, I mean, to get the, sorry for a bad analogy, the pig through the python, I mean, to get through this bolus of work, because we got more stuff that we have to do. And, and if we can save, you know, taxpayer dollars along the way, and, I mean, there's all the, some goodness in there.
The other thing that we're not going to know is how boundaries will affect any of these things.
Right, right, and that's why I brought that up right away, because these are based on our current boundaries and, you know, boundaries will change and then as we open new schools and move through that, and so that, that's going to have an impact on capacity issues.
And whether we do a different concept school at any of these that are still left. And I understand we can't, you know, dramatically change the plan, but if there's tweaks that could be made that are still in keeping with what the voters passed.
Yep.
But we're not going to know that.
For me, this also just goes way past the, like, way past the FMP, because clearly, North Liberty, I mean, you, these kids are calm, I mean, I, you know, unless they're just radically wrong, we're going to, you're going to have another, you know, you know, at what point do we get another junior highs worth of kids?
Yeah.
Literally that many kids who just are here.
So.
The good news is it's some time, you know, when I first looked at those numbers and thought, oh my goodness, when did the, when do we, how soon do we get those kids? We've got a little bit of time there, so.
Yeah, it's not immediate.
So we'll, we'll grow into it.
I'd say, you know, they did a nice job of giving you your last three-year average and your seven- or 10-year low and high. You look at Iowa City, it's pretty stable across that timeframe.
Yeah.
North Liberty is not.
There's a big swing there.
It's going to be the smaller number.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not a lot.
Seven to 27 was the swing they gave us on North Liberty.
Yeah. So the other topic that was sort of associated with the student potential analysis was the work we wanted to do from equity perspective on balancing elementaries. We've had some work sessions, actually, many of our past work sessions, we've covered that in some discussion, principals have come in and given their, their views. So we followed up from the last work session because there was an idea around, can, is there something we can do to accelerate Twain? Because that Jeremy was clear and felt like there was a, a need. So we met, Lori and I, with Steve and Amy, which is the four of us, right?
I think it was, yeah.
And to say, okay, so we heard that Twain felt there needed to be something potentially even put in place for fall of 18, and if that's the case, man, we better get busy. And so we had a conversation and, and talked about it, and I'll try to summarize you guys, chime in please. But, but I think the conversation felt that we wanted to be thoughtful around implementing these kinds of changes at elementaries. We felt kind of late in the process to try to get something done for 19, and we felt that we needed to take a holistic approach to the elementaries, that accelerating Twain might not be happily received by another school that didn't get something accelerated for a fall of 18. So trying to take a holistic view, we felt that there needed to be some education and awareness raising in the community around the need to do this and to kind of set the tone, I suppose, that status quo is not acceptable, that this board is, has been very, I think, clear in our intentions around equity is really, really important. We need to take active steps to address it. We understand it's a tough, knotty, hard issue. There's a number of things that we've talked about, whether it's busing, whether it's magnet schools, whether it's pairing, and so, but we still know that there's going to be a lot of folks in the community that are like, not for me, not my kids. So we talked about maybe trying to get a, kind of an education campaign together where we could have some community sessions, talk about the need, that status quo is not really acceptable, that we're not going to allow that, that we wanted to get some input from community members. Okay, knowing that change is coming, what are some ideas that you would be comfortable with us exploring and trying to? I know in a super short amount of time, collect up some of that input from the community and allow then the admin team to work on some of those ideas over the summer, to bring some proposals back to the board, say, at the beginning of the school year, which would then give us a chance to sink our teeth into some of the ideas, hold additional work sessions and community listening posts, et cetera, with a, with a goal of agreeing on and deciding what we want to implement as a priority for the fall 19 year, and trying to get into a decision-making cycle by November, December, that allows us a chance to actually implement properly, meaning we do the proper communication, we've got the planning, we understand budget, you know, and we understand what impact we're, we're trying to, to, to make. And it would be, you know, year one of a set of probably a multi-year set of activities, but we felt that the communication and community awareness was really important, we felt like we needed to get some more input, we felt like we needed to give ourselves some time to plan what those options would be, and then we felt like we needed to give our time, the time to get the implementation into our, our annual cycle. And so that's something that the four of us talked about and wanted to get this thing the board's take, is that a feasible approach? Does it make sense? Is it too aggressive? Is it not aggressive enough? So, and please, folks that were there, what would you add to that?
The only thing I'd add is Steve's comment about swapping some neighborhoods at Twain. He mentioned that that could be perceived poorly by the kids that are being moved in to Twain.
Yeah, in and out. I, I think, and I'll, we'd frog off both those two, and essentially, yeah, we want to be really deliberate about the process, and I know one of the things that we talked about when we were together is we have to be careful at solving a problem. And Twain doesn't create a new problem in the school, in the whole school. And so if our, if our schools are full and there isn't much room at the end, and we're going to move these students into this school, and then we probably have to move some of those students into this school, and how do we go about doing that in a way which provides an appropriate opportunity for both school communities to be a part of that conversation? I think that was something that we talked about when we were together. So it's done with and not to, I think that's the, the really hard part about making these kinds of changes. We certainly want to make sure that no children in the process get caught up in this. We don't want anyone to be those kids. They're all our kids. And so we want to make sure that, that whenever we look at that kind of attendance zone change, that it's done holistically and that there's a true structural support for it, for the students and the families that are going through that change, whether they're moving this way or moving that way. That was some of the concern that we had at this date and how we go about doing that, and then what does that mean for those other buildings? Because we could have been potentially looking at three different elementary schools that are contiguous to that particular attendance zone issue. And then like Janet said, we know that there are a handful of other schools out there who have also said, you know, kind of, wait a minute, what about me? I've got these challenges over here. Why do they get to go first and not us? So those were things we talked about collectively.
The other thing I would just add is around the timeline, and like Janet said, does it feel too aggressive, not aggressive enough? But if we are serious about trying to make changes for that 19, 20 school year, we really have to know no later than December. I think about the multitude of things that are going to have to take place even after that decision, whether it's around staffing or understanding how it impacts transportation, understanding how that impacts people's ability to seek out and, and get before and after school programming. Those kinds of things, that there's a lot of things that will have to be in the works. And, you know, this last decision is still fairly new to our families, that May of 2016, where, you know, we've got a lot of kiddos, our families anticipating that they were going to have a change coming already. So we really need to beat the bushes and make everybody aware that this conversation is happening, so they're not thinking one thing's happening and all of a sudden they're turned on their heads come next January, so.
You know, Amy raises a really good point, because I think that some of the loudest concerns that were expressed the last time around were about the issue of before and after school care. And we know how important that is for our working families, and some real concerns about how do I get on the waiting list? And boy, you know, I literally put my kids on the waiting list right after they were born, kind of thing, and, and space is tight, and what do I do if I can't get in? And there is some real angst from parents back in 15, 16, when we went through that conversation. And that, that's not, you could look at that and say, well, it's not a school issue, that doesn't happen between, you know, seven and three with our, eight and three with our elementary kids, nine and four with our high school kids. But when, from the outside looking in, our parents see us in that wraparound role and, and as part of that process. And so I, I think we want to make sure that we have those conversations in a way that people can see that very easily in the general public, so whether it's the spring's conversation, next fall's conversation, and they have the opportunity to share their, their thoughts and concerns with us, so that we can really make sure that we're planning about, planning for that.
I guess I understand the decision, I just feel bad that, I think, we as a board didn't do enough sooner to get to the point where we could have made something happen, because I think we heard these concerns at Twain when we had that listening post way back beginning of the school year, and we did nothing, you know, as far as this type of discussion until.
Well, I, I'm with you, although I can tell you we were having this discussion in 2010 and nothing's been.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it's just kind of.
Yeah, we, well, and so that's why I think my, I don't, I don't think it's too aggressive. But then with all the things you've talked about, I think we have to be careful, you know, if we do this change incrementally and, and then start with the low hanging fruit that, that we can do, and then increment, how does that, how do we phase it in over two or three years potentially? And maybe that won't work and we'll have to do it all at once, because, I mean, I'm sure as soon as you start to move kids at Twain over here, well, then you're going to have to move these kids, even up here, we barely avoided those dominos. It's just, it's going to happen if you impact one school, you're going to impact the schools around it, which will impact, so. And I like, and I hear you, Paul, that we didn't do it sooner this year.
I'm just saying, like, when we think about our work sessions and our meetings and things, we need to keep pushing them back and adding on and then pushing them back.
Yeah, it's definitely not too aggressive in my mind, and, you know, you use the phrase, we need to do it with them and not to them, but from the discussions that we have, at some point, it's doing it to somebody.
Yeah.
And if you're truly going to try and make these big sweeping changes, it's doing it to people. And I, I appreciate the need to do it right, which takes time, and I appreciate the need to make sure that we're hearing from all the interested parties, but it does feel like we just keep kicking that can, and I really wanted to have some sort of action that we could hang our hats on, like we did something. And this just seems more of the same. Now, it is, you know, almost April, and you're talking about, can you do something, you know, in August? That, that'd be pretty dang rough for a lot of people, so I get that too. So I, I don't know, I just feel, I guess maybe the same way Paul does, that we should have done something earlier, and somehow we're kind of stuck in the spot where we probably can't get something done by the fall. But a whole year from that seems way too late, you know what I mean? But we're not going to do something in a year, so I just feel stuck.
I think the plan that's presented is what we have to work with, even understanding that, yeah, we all wish that maybe some of these things can be addressed sooner. My biggest concern, I mean, it sort of fits in, but it maybe doesn't. We know we have staff that's expressing serious concerns, not only at Twain, but at Alexander. So knowing that this discussion, there won't be an implementation until down the road, I just want to make sure that as an administrative team, those concerns are being addressed and they're getting what they need in order to be on the front line, dealing with some of, some kids that come with some significant issues, and they're not feeling as though their concerns are falling on deaf ears, because I know they have raised some serious concerns at both schools.
They're not even the only, the only building.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Really, kids with some really intense behaviors.
Absolutely. But I mean, I, I know, or at least I heard, there was a very long meeting at one of the schools with administrative teams. So I don't know if that's happened at multiple elementary schools.
Yep.
But, I mean, that's, that's something that, I mean, we just got to talk about mental health. Our teachers are, I mean, they're struggling.
Yeah, we're, that's actually been an issue at probably our six highest needs elementary schools, as we've been working with them, and we've been trying to meet their, the changing needs that they have in the building level over the course of the year through staffing, where we have it available, whether it's hiring new staff or moving staff in from other areas within the district where we can provide support to them. And I think part of it is, if they know what's happening next, then it gives them the opportunity to work towards that. I think part of it is not knowing what's next and that uncertainty that's out there. So we know from that last go around back in 15, 16 with attendance areas that there aren't a lot of opportunities for us to shift boundaries that cause significant change in the demographics of those schools. And so that's one of the things that we hear when we're out talking to the staff is, even if we make changes to our attendance areas, you know, we're going to give them some of our kids, we're going to get some of their kids, our kids, their kids, they look the same. So how is that going to change the teaching and learning dynamic in my building? And so I think that's one of the issues, that there's a level of uncertainty out there because they're looking at it, and from what they've seen and what their expectations are, the changes that they think might happen don't necessarily provide an outlet. And so I think that's going to be part of that conversation, both in the spring and next fall, and that may get to where, you just talked about, Sean, where we wind up with decisions that aren't always with.
I, I think that the education piece that you talked about is important, and I think it's clarity of where we want to get to and why we're trying to get there, and that kind of gives you that light at the end of the tunnel. But I think to Ruthina's point, okay, if that's not our short-term fix, what can we look at that are the short-term fixes to help them get to that end of the tunnel?
Yeah.
And you need to have that wrapped up in that same education package, say, we're going to really try and fix it by this date, but we're not going to leave you high and dry between now and then.
Right.
I think that's right. We've heard you, there's some short-term, there's some long-term.
Yep, some of them are some programming changes that we've already talked about, that we can look at in the buildings that may cause less concentration of some of our highest needs students, and so that's one of the things that we're already looking at for next fall, as we look at program location, so that we can decentralize that a little bit and create a little bit more breathing room there.
And I, I absolutely think that that will be helpful, but the other, on the flip side of that is some of the intense behaviors too. They are in their homeschool building. So again, it's going back to the presentation that we heard earlier, what are those supports that we're providing for the students? What, what are we doing in the way of staffing to help anticipate and, you know, provide for some of those needs too? And at the end of the day, you know, we provided that staffing sheet, I think that was in November, December, kind of showing, you know, what that staffing allocation looks like across our buildings and how we've stacked our higher FRO buildings the way we have with certain positions that other people don't have access to. And at the end of the day, we're going to have to, you know, we don't have additional dollars just sitting out there. We're going to have to continue to shift if that's what we're talking about, you know, and so is it a staffing need, is it a capacity need, is it a mental health care piece? We've continued to try to provide more strat two, special education teachers back toward a building, and so we're trying to attack it, I guess, from multiple avenues and provide the best support that we can to our students and therefore our staff as well.
And the other piece is training too, because we can continue to throw more staff, and we've done that in some places, and it's had some bit of an impact, but I still think there's some huge training pieces that we need to roll out as well, along with that.
So, I mean, for me, I hear, and I, it feels like knife in the heart, that we're not taking any action, we haven't done anything. I mean, I, that makes me feel like we're disappointing our key stakeholders, and I don't like that, it makes me feel bad, we're not taking care of big problems. On the other hand, another part of me really hates sloppy implementations that have a lot of unintended consequences, because we haven't taken the proper time to plan, communicate, understand staffing, whatever the impacts are. And so if we can demonstrate that as a board, we're committed. And so if we can demonstrate that, as a board, we're committed, that we are prioritizing our time and the district's time to solve these problems, we're putting a plan in place, we're going to be able to see, you know, action and activity with the clear message that status quo. Because we've done studies, we've done research, we've got survey information. We had put all this information in one of our previous work sessions, and that, all that stuff is sad. We haven't taken action as a board, but I think what we're trying to say is, we are going to now. It's disappointing that it's not a big sweeping change for fall of eighteen, but we're recognizing it takes time to do that well, and here's a plan, and you can expect to see results from us as we continue to work through that plan in a transparent, you know, thoughtful way, so that the implementation and the impacts are what we desire. And so somehow sending that message, I think, is important. And we need to dedicate our time. If we say this is our priority, then we should make sure that as we set agendas, as we set our work session agendas, as we set our time for board retreats, whatever, that this is it. Because we have so many other things that we spend our time on as a board, and that has probably gotten in our way of making this our number-one priority since this board was formed and first started meeting in September. Or whenever we had our first meeting, sorry, September.
Yep, yes.
Have you tried to have this conversation how many times? And it's been nine thirty, nine forty-five?
Exactly, because we've got this full agenda leading up to it. And so I hear everything, and I agree...
I think it's important, you know, as part of this educational piece, and letting people know where we're trying to get at, to also say what we are doing. This is stuff that Amy and Jamie were just talking about.
Yeah.
Like, these are things that we are doing. This is, you know, we want to do more, and this is, you know, it's not, it's not easy. And it's important that people realize that, including ourselves, right? But that doesn't mean we can sit back and say, well, we're doing stuff, so we're all good.
No, we've got to.
Yeah, we can't say that.
And we need to, we need to show steps are being taken. And I don't know that people know all the stuff that we're currently doing.
Hopefully not.
And I'm not the big cheerleader kind of person that's going to say, rah rah, we're doing great things. But I think it, at the very least, needs to be out there that these are things that we're doing, and here's some more stuff that we're going to try and do. And hopefully, all that together is going to get us where we want to go. And I think all of that in a nice package to put out there for folks, whether it's parents, or staff, or anything else, I think is helpful.
Could we get, for those buildings that are really suffering, and if teachers are really personally struggling, I mean, could we bring synchrony in the building and not say, go make an appointment, but it's right here, and go on your prep? I don't know.
Or do a group session?
I mean, it's the same thing with the kids, right? They're going to go see somebody at the building. I mean, teachers are the same way. It's like, well, self-care, so take that extra hour after work. So that might be just, I mean, literally, people that have mental health calendars, we, I want to bring that to them if we can. I mean, I'd suggest a gift basket, right? But that's a little tongue-in-cheek. I mean, really get people's support, because we've got synchrony, we use them.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So that's one piece. And then, because here's, and I don't remember who said it, but one of the principals said at that one work session that went to like ten, she's like, I don't mind doing all this work, but we've done it before, and it goes nowhere.
Yeah.
And so I know that was my personal frustration, when in two thousand and ten, we're like, we're going to get equity, and then it just goes out the door. You just give up, you become disengaged, and you become hopeless. This will not happen. So hopefully, I mean, I think we need to take care of our folks in the short term, immediate term even. But once we do the community education piece, and we start the process, and the process is those community meetings, and then we engage those teachers to say, you're a part of this process. And previously, in nine, ten, in that redistricting, equity was right there, you know? Until neighborhood schools became important, and equity was the first thing out the window. And I think what we're saying is, it's staying at the top. We will sacrifice all these other things, because this is the priority. And if, and there's never been a board that has said that. There may be been board members who have said that. But there's never been a board that's been willing. And, you know, you're going to have to stand up to the people who are very comfortable with the status quo. That's what's going to happen. Those are very loud, powerful voices in our community. And that's where the, we've buckled every single time, is, oh, it sounds great. Ah, but jeez, we just can't do it. And I, and then I think that's, for the teachers in those buildings, it's, you become hopeless. I mean, it's really, it is a knife to the heart. And then you get, so that's a real experience. And so if they're engaged in a process, and they see, holy smokes, this board is committed? I mean, to be honest, I think, I'm hopeful that momentum even pushes through the next election and just is part of that. Like, we, every, you know, anybody who runs against that is sort of like, good luck. Because this is where the momentum is, this is where the energy is. And that's not the immediate thing for those folks in those buildings. But if they believe there is that light, and we are not just, we're along the way setting our agendas, and we're having these work sessions, and we're having these community meetings, and it continues to move there, hopefully that becomes, it feels better, and they can get some hope, and they can get a little spark. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, this is pretty pie in the sky, but I think that's what we're aiming for. I mean, this is not work that most districts do. I mean, this is work that, I mean, we're taking, I think we're committing to taking this on, I believe that. And I can understand people don't believe us, because they've had the ball taken away from them every single time. Why would they believe us? There's, and we have to show it. And I think if we do something quick, if it does go poorly, or if kids get caught in the mix and they get hurt, what have we done, you know? And then, and then that's going to, that's what killed the parent school thing in oh-nine, ten, because they just said, oh, it's Longfellow and Twain. So they freaked out, why us, why just us? And it was this huge backlash. But if, so I think if we do the single thing, we'll get that again. Well, why are you only doing it for that school or this school? But if we do it all at once and say, everybody, everybody has a part of this, that, that process has never happened before in that way, not with that commitment. So I don't, and personally, I don't know that it's as easy. What's the easy answer for the fall of eighteen? I don't know if there is one that's like, this would be, this, you know, this would have the good impact, and we can be pretty confident that we're not going to.
I think that, when you bring that up, I think all of us have a, probably, a relationship with the school where they feel more comfortable coming to you because they know you the best. Maybe Kirkwood hasn't, you know?
Sure.
Lucas in Twain may have, you know, Ruthina, Twain, my wife, or Sarah Blaney, whatever it is. So when the teachers come to us, because they may feel more comfortable, we're going to say, well, did you look at it? You know, did you guys even consider it? You know, I mean, it's got to be kind of, it's got to be message back to them that it was discussed somehow, that nothing could happen, because I didn't even get a look at it, you know? So I feel bad.
Well, there wasn't even any real proposal on the table.
That's what I'm saying, though, is that we didn't, so when they say, hey, did you guys even consider what we asked you to do?
What did they ask us to do?
That's what I'm wondering.
I mean, well, I think you guys may have talked, but I don't know.
But I'm, Jeremy said...
If we moved lines, or we did some transition, you know, whatever they wanted to do, did you guys consider it, or look at it, or go through a plan? You know, no, it didn't come to us. So like, that's what we're going to have to say, unless we have a message that can go back to them, but...
I think the message is, we know we need to make changes, we need to put some short-term supports in place to help. We're committed to developing a plan so that we can begin implementation for fall of nineteen, and that we're going to take the proper steps and the necessary steps, the plan, and work our way through what the best solutions are to achieve equity in our elementary schools. And it's going to take us some time to do that in a very effective, transparent, communicative, two-way way. Two-way way, you know what I mean? So I, so I don't know that we had specific Twain recommendations or ideas for change other than the shelters and trying to figure out how to adjust that. And so I think, I mean, if we need to put some talking points together, we should, so that we're communicating, you know, effectively with folks who are going to come to you and say, hey, what happened?
Or if there are, like, super-specific ideas, I mean, let's look at them, and let's see, you know?
I think they're somewhere past that point now.
No, we are past that point. I mean, there, even if...
We were past that point when we first had the board work session at ten o'clock at night, when Jeremy said, oh, I really want to do this.
What, at least what I'm saying is, I mean, it's, it's sad, but I understand. I mean, we're beyond that point. We cannot rush through anything, even if it's like one of, an amazing plan that we have tons of... It just won't work, especially for some of our families.
Oh, yeah.
We're beyond.
Yeah.
I mean, and so it's just given feedback that, I mean, yeah, the plan that's presented, that the four of you talked through, I mean, it is what it is, and we just have to commit to making sure that happens and not getting sidetracked, or not sort of continuing to kick the can down the road.
That's up to us.
Because we have to commit to make, putting that work in, putting that effort in. And it's going to be, I mean, that doesn't mean other pieces stop coming at us, because we're going to have to talk about the impending budget crunch we're going to be faced with. So there's going to be a lot on our table, and that's just part of serving.
And I think another thing that we just have to be ready for is, you know, and back in fifteen, sixteen, when we had the conversation about attendance areas, the community at that time told us, we need an eighteen-month run-up to this in order for us to adequately prepare the change for our kids. Well, we're past that point already for nineteen.
That's right.
So, you know, if we, if we're really seriously saying, hey, we're going to look at some changes for nineteen, and we're going to talk about giving you that determination in December, I think you just need to be prepared as board members, because for me, this will be my third go-round with it, that there's a, there's a large contingent in the community that says, we need eighteen months because these are things that we have to prepare for, before and after school care, transportation of our kids. I mean, they got a whole, long list of legitimate concerns, and they'll come to you and say, hey, that's a wonderful solution, but that needs to be for the fall of twenty, not the fall of nineteen.
Well, that's where I'm, and I don't want to, you know, again, I don't think it's too aggressive, but I also want to be realistic when you say November, December. Because, you know, we've had a couple of times this year when it was like, definitely, we can do that, and then it, it didn't happen, and it fell through, and it was pretty tough for us, you know? Where we thought we could do it, and maybe we, you know?
Ethnic Studies, we should make our goal October.
Well, we've got the leanest administrative staff in the state of Iowa. So the truth is, like, real capacity. I mean, it sounds good when you tell us, we can do it, we can do it, but I want to make sure you can.
Yeah.
Because self-care is important for everybody, and we want to be realistic. And we, yeah, I'm imagining being a parent with somebody on the before and after-school list, and you tell me in April, it's the wrong school, and now I, I, what do you do with that? And so, so these are real concerns for, for all of our families. And it's, again, and I don't, I'm not, I'm personally not going to kick any can. I mean, I just want to do this well and do it right, and I believe that we're finally going to do it. And that's why I can say that. And I don't, you know, I feel good about where we're at, because I know in the past, it's just, I mean, I've watched this can get kicked down the road for almost a decade, so...
Well, it's going to be, and I'm with you there. But June, July, and August, especially if you're looking for that parenting participation component, people tune out.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and then you're going to come right back in, the start of school year, when you have all the school year, start of school year, things that come up, things that aren't on our radar now, that all of a sudden will, will have to focus like a laser beam along with this. So we're going to have to be very aggressive on it. And it's, and Amy, you're saying December is, that's a decision. That's, everything's worked out, you've got everything done, it's votable at that point. So that's an extremely aggressive timeline.
Well, and I'll say for me, what sounds good is that, I mean, we'll see what the community feedback is and what people say, but what, you know, a decision on, is a decision on our process, is a decision? I mean, I doubt we're going to decide on parent schools, magnet schools, boundaries by descent. I mean, that seems, I, you know, just, unless that's all we do, which that, that's just not true, right? It's never going to be all we do. Things happen. So I just want us...
I think you have to be committed to the fact that it's going to be a messy process, because there'll be a lot of unintended consequences. And as we work through those, you might be able to make a decision in December, but you might have to be willing to say, and we'll have to have a, come back and have a conversation about X, Y, and Z in January, and February, and March. Transportation may be an issue, pre-K may be an issue, BASP, I mean, there are all kinds of things that are going to surface as part of that process that you won't, we won't even see until we get past that point. So I think we just also have to recognize it. It'll be clean to some degree, but then there's going to be some messes that we're just going to have to commit to mopping up as a, as collectively as a group.
And many people won't pay attention until after decisions are made.
And I think what Janet outlined as the process was that this community discussion, really, it's educating the community. It's not really that we're saying, please tell us what you want. We're providing to them, these are the superintendent directions that were passed, I'm not sure when, but many years ago. This is what's going to happen. We talked about having some teachers talk about what their experience, what their day looks like in their school. We talked about really making it a, this is what we're working on, kind of an information meeting. That that would happen, and what we talked about was that would happen in April.
Yeah.
And then during the summer, we would start on the maps. So potentially, by the end of the summer, we could be close to some maps, close to the end of some maps.
And then you could go out to the community engagement piece.
Yeah, and that's, then you've got something to talk about.
But options is not blue sky, yeah.
Because we have to do quite a bit of work before we get to where we take it to the community, because otherwise it's just, I mean, it's total chaos, which is how it's been in the past. When we've asked the community to draw a certain year map, what do you think? Clusters, do it this way, do it that way. It just, it's never ended up with a change at the elementary level.
And I'll throw up, you know, I've been through this process a few times, too, back before, with all that discussion about the high school in North Liberty, too. And a couple of messages that just do seem to be consistent are, one is, please just tell us and stay with that decision, don't change it, don't back up, don't just, because we'll live with that. We just need to know the unexpected, you know, when we talk about uncertainty, it's the uncertainty that kills people, or the idea that, well, this is what it is today, but what's it going to be tomorrow? And then there was a comment that a father made at a community meeting at North Central, and he said, you keep throwing the term tweak out there. They said, and tweaking, from your perspective, are small nudges or changes, but if you're the family that's part of that tweak, it's a pretty big deal. So just, again, back to that, make the decision, stay with it, so that we all have time to prep, we can make those reservations for the right childcare, or the right areas where we need our kids to be, or make those arrangements for transportation, and we can plan and be comfortable knowing that that's really what's going to happen.
Yeah, I agree, Jean, that's been consistent all, always, all the time. The most consistent thing is just tell us, yes, and stick to it.
And stick to it. So some package of information, right? The education, you know, kind of the burning platform, and what we're going to do in the short term. You know, burning platform of why we're making this change, status quo is not acceptable, here's a process outline that's going to take us down this path, and here's some things we're doing in the short term, because we do understand there are some immediate needs that need to be addressed. I'm looking at you guys.
I'm going to look back at you, because when we go out and talk to them, I think one of the things that's important is from the, from the standpoint of the voice and the authority, I think that we're going to need some, some board members out front.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Yes.
I'm thinking more of just putting the, just putting the material together. We're champions.
But we want to make sure we speak from your voice.
Yeah, yeah.
So we want to make sure that what we put together represents the things you want to tell the audience. So you need to start thinking about those things and emailing them to me so that I can start working with Kristen and getting the decks put together. I can start working with Amy and Matt and the rest of the crew at the office there to make sure we gather the right information, because we're going to want to get that out to you so you can look at it and say, hey, if I'm standing up in front of a group of people and I'm talking about this, is this my stuff? Is this, do I feel comfortable putting this on my shield and standing in front of a group that might not be friendly and might not like this idea? So I want to make sure that, that we get from you what you are going to want to say so that we can make sure that's reflected in the deck as we put that together.
Is email the best way to do that, or is that...
Email's an easy way. If you send that to me, I can start compiling that, Kristen can have that stuff put together, we can get iterations out. What I'll do is I'll send those out to you, you can take a look at them, respond only to me, so we don't wind up having a walking quorum going on, and you just send those back to me, and we'll do an iterative process. And I think in a, in a relatively short period of time, I think we can have, have that put together. You'll see questions, you'll say, hey, this isn't addressed in there, and you'll let me know that, and then we can...
What's our, what's our timeline for getting this together?
Yesterday.
I know, I know. So, I mean, any feedback...
So, I mean, any feedback we have initially to kinda set the tone, what are the key messages?
So I, here, just the quick ones for me, status quo is not acceptable, equities that I'm more concerned. And if you don't agree with that, spend some time in those buildings, see what it's like for other kids. 'Cause, I mean, we can talk about reading source all you want, but it, the truth is, when you're in that environment, that's inequitable.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you wanna go so far as to say, "We live in a segregated community in the school district, whatever municipalities wanna do, the school district's not gonna be a segregated school district." I mean, that's my, I mean, I'll stand in front of any crowd and say that and try to be diplomatic and as polite as I can, but the truth is, that's the truth.
And the boards commit to change.
And I've seen it from many different angles and it, and I truly believe it's mostly, mostly an education piece, it's mostly, I haven't seen it from that side, so I don't know what it's like on that side, and then I don't understand how bad it is. Just, I mean, the teachers at Twain Alexander, I mean, um, yeah, I mean, my heart, it just, I am a bleeding heart, but, you know, that stuff really gets, you know, just, 'cause I know what that's like and it's, it's March and it's a long way to May and I know what they're feeling like and it's, so right now, to get that support for those teachers is just critical, from now until May, 'cause, um, yeah. So those are my quick, pounding my pulpit.
And we'd need to get some dates on the calendar very soon.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can have away.
All right?
Okay, thank you for that. That was a good conversation, a very important one.
That was the best one we've had on that.
Okay, agricultural program, who's taking this? Uh, thank you.
Hi, well, sure. Um, so as you know, you approved us moving forward with an ag program in January and in listening to you guys talking just now, I heard statements like, "Do it well and do it right," avoiding a sloppy implementation, and something about a pig in a python, but I didn't quite get that.
I'm still picturing that one myself.
Sorry.
Trying to think if it was confinement or free rein.
It's a software development thing, sorry.
Um, so as much as, you know, I think all of us would have maybe liked to have implemented a man program this fall, we really realize that starting a brand-new career tech ed program for the district is gonna take a lot of thought and a lot of planning. So we put together this implementation plan that should be in your board docs to really think about what's the best way to do this, to set the program up for success and to make sure that it gets off on the right foot. So looking at getting a committee together this spring and into the summer to really think about that pathway work that we were just talking about before, what are the courses and that sequence of courses that is best to offer for our students? And then taking the fall to make sure it gets in the program of studies so that it's well-represented when students do have the opportunity to register for courses, it's there along with everything else. Um, we've got facility work to do, we've got business connections to make, we've got work-based learning opportunities to try to set up, but really most importantly is getting that information in the hands of students prior to their registration. And then register students next winter along with all the other courses and then based on enrollment, then we know the FTE and the, the staff that we need to hire so we could post for staffing and get that set up in a systematic manner instead of a quick implementation plan that would've had to have happened in order for it to get implemented by this fall.
So as I look through this, and I think of the ethnic studies course, I'm wondering, what's, is there a number that you guys will have of students that has to be registered for the course to happen?
You know, and I think that's something that we could, that that committee could really talk about. I also uploaded just the, yesterday, kind of a doc that shows a new course proposal process and in asking our administrators at the secondary level, kind of, "What are those numbers that they use to, to run a course?" Typically, they say it's about twenty-four, you know, kids to say that a section's viable. Certainly, we have some unique cases in lots of our courses that might be lower than that. But then you also have to think, if you're starting a program, we know we're gonna get attrition throughout the program. So if we don't start off with large numbers to begin with, you know, there's gonna be fewer that take it the second year and fewer that take it the third year. When I look at our career tech ed programs, you know, we're looking at two hundred kids that, you know, are taking manufacturing courses in the course of the year. And that's our lowest right now. I've got, you know, seven hundred that take Family Consumer Science, I've got nine hundred that take Business Management. And even with those high numbers, we don't get a ton that finish two years and very few that finish all three years. And those are numbers we have to report to the state. So I'm not sure what to propose at this point, you know, but I think maybe that committee could look at those numbers and maybe you guys have a thought, you know, how many kids do you think we really need to get registered in order to...
Yeah, we're, we're, we're starting this from scratch.
Yep.
And, and the schools that we went around and visited, um, you know, it, they've had long histories with it. I guess a, a school to talk to would be Waukee that started one relatively soon as well.
Right, yeah.
Uh, that way. But, um, uh, we, we approved earlier, it's a C I M, uh, computer-integrated manufacturing or computer-assisted manufacturing.
Okay.
Talking with the instructor of that one, there may only be ten kids taken.
Yep.
And it's gonna require a hundred and forty thousand dollars' worth of equipment to do it, to run the curriculum properly. Now, I'm not saying we, we do away with it, but I'm just saying that we put significant investment into programming that does reach a small number of kids. So I'm, I'm reluctant to cap anything with a number right off and say, "If we don't have that, it's, it's not gonna go," because when you look at many schools, uh, it's one of the biggest programs on campus. And I've, I'm very optimistic going forward that this, this will grow and expand and it's year-round, it's a year-round program, which wanna be one of the first ones, if the first one that we offer that is, is act essentially year-round curriculum, teachers working year-round with students. So, uh, there's a lot of new and unique things to this that, and, and the biggest point, and I, and I agree with everything that you said about, uh, taking the time to do it right. Matt and I have been talking and I have had discussions with Scott Johnson, who came to our work session and spoke that they would like to invite a delegation to this year's convention, April twenty-third. Now, it's coming up real quick and that, so, but we would have an opportunity to send two delegations this year and then also the year before, nineteen, twenty, to encourage, to get students interested and to, to be educated because, you know, I don't know that, you know, a lot of kids know about the C I, the computer-aided manufacturing, but we've, we've got to do our, our part to make sure that we get every, every student at least knowing what this curriculum has to offer and everything that way. And also, you know, this, the state is gonna, is, is going to be requiring pathways for, for this type of curriculum and I think to a certain extent, we're, we're in front of what is gonna be mandated to us going ahead, so. Steve, do you have any thoughts?
Sure. I just touch on what you said, something Phil about Waukee. I guess, and the reason I asked about numbers is 'cause we are looking at three high schools, Waukee's one high school, so it's a little bit different, but like, you know, if there's only, sort of, there's ten kids that sign up at City High and there's fourteen at West and there's twelve over here, you know, are you gonna run through sections? I mean, that's something we'd have to look at, like...
Right, agreed, agreed. And, and to that point too, I've had people talk to me from Regina that they're interested that we're gonna have something potentially at City High that's walking distance for Regina kids to take. And realistically, if we're looking at even just getting the Lehman family to take vocational agriculture at, at the public schools, you'd have a section right there. So, uh, there's, that's an inside joke, but you've got it.
I know, I know.
It fell on some deaf ears, but anyway, um, you know, I think there's, there's, this is something that I, I think is gonna draw in a significant number of students from Regina when they see that, especially if we can, uh, get a curriculum established at City High because it's so close to them. And their, their other option is Solon, West Branch, or Tiffin. So we're, we're the much closer, uh, transportation option for them. But Steve, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for inviting me to the table here to participate, appreciate that. Somebody might have known me, I'm a retired industrial technology instructor, um, have family backgrounds both in agriculture and industry and, uh, I have been a proponent of trying to convince the educational leadership of the, of the school district to make a reasonable commitment to career trade and technical education for quite a long time. And, uh, I gotta, I have to say, it's been disappointing, but this is exciting. And to think of giving our students an opportunity to join nearly eight hundred thousand kids across this country who are having great experiences in vocational agriculture and FFA programs, um, it's just great. And we can't underestimate how big and powerful this is. The farm-to-table movement is, is, you know, gargantuan. Uh, I was traveling in the south the last couple of months, went to farmers markets in Sarasota, Florida, St. Petersburg, Florida, Austin, Texas. I can't believe the numbers of, of participants in this kind of thing now and how important this is for people to know more about where their food comes from. Now, Iowa's an agricultural state and I really believe we're at a turning point here that we really need to pay some attention to, to make sure that we are able to diversify our agricultural base and make, and increase profitability. Now, corn went to four dollars and eight cents a bushel last week and farmers are getting a little bit more positive now because now they, they crossed over to the profitability range, but there is so much that can be done with agriculture that depends on involvement of these young people and they are involved. One of the first things that I did when I started to pop and roll this was I went to the Fair Board, Johnson County Fair Board, because I had two students there who were on the Fair Board, two former students, and there was another student who was my wife's former student. All of them are leaders in agribusiness in, in this area. And, uh, they became involved, they told, they came to me later and said they wanted to participate. One of them, a couple of them are on the steering, were on our steering committee and it's very exciting to see the quality of that leadership. And it's exciting to see the number of females involved in agriculture. When you see the, uh, pictures of the participants in ag programs, um, half of them are female and usually more than half of the leadership in these groups are female. I mean, they are really advancing in this area. And, uh, one of the things I did years ago was I, I had a student that was the son of one of the Stutzmans down at Hills and I gave him a special assignment. I said, "I want you to go home tonight and at the supper table, I want you to ask your parents what they think about start, starting an ag program in Iowa City Community Schools." And when that kid came back next day, I asked him what happened and he said, "Yeah, we talked about it and they said they didn't think it would ever happen." When people in our steering committee talk about, other people in the ag industry are talking about starting an ag program in Iowa City, they get laughter. They don't think it can happen either, but I think we have the potential to have one of the greatest programs in, anyway, I really do. And we really have a lot of support from agribusiness and when we call upon them to help with this, I think we can make it happen. Now, I was concerned about the budget problems. One of the things I did, I went to Joe Walkum, I said, I said, "If the governor recommended two-point-two percent for schools growth, how do we end up with one-point-one?" And he said, "The money just wasn't there." And that's a really big problem for us to be concerned with now, but I think it's not insurmountable at all to come up with the money to finance these programs. I think agribusiness is ready to step up. I think they're waiting to see what'll happen, what we can do, and that, and they really wanna be a part of this. And I think there are enough people around that wanna see it happen. I've been the Iowa State Extension people, talked to them about building the sequence from 4H to an ag program and I think that is the best bridge that we can make in this community by involving those kids at that level and letting them know the opportunities that are available to them later. And Kirkwood has an exceptionally fine post-secondary program, you know, we've got it all lined, all lined up here that, and it could be a really great thing. And I don't think we have to worry about enrollment. I think you're gonna be surprised at the large number of students who are interested. One of the things we did, we spent some time down, quite a bit of time down at Johnson County Fair, talking to people. I remember talking to one kid, he had a prize-winning rabbit on his lap in the, in the rabbit barn and he was really disappointed that his program in Solon was coming to an end. It really was. And, uh, West Branch was considering closing their program, Solon closed their program and I think, I think that was a big mistake and hopefully we can turn it around.
So I think, I mean...
I've taken quite a bit of time, so thank you.
Well, we, we've approved the program, we voted to approve that. I think we're talking about now the, sort of, the details of implementation and there's questions around...
Right.
You know, do we have thresholds for enrollment and how are we gonna manage it? And I think that's something that, you know, as we work through the details of the implementation plan, we'll just need to put that together. I mean, I hear the, I don't want this program to go the way of the ethnic studies class.
Agreed.
Um, because that was, in my opinion, really bad, the way we managed that, disappointed a lot of people. And we have the time, the good news is, we have the time to implement this in a way that we're gonna hopefully be able to get the, the planning and the awareness and it into the course register in time so students see it in their normal course registration process and so I think that's what we're looking at. Is that fair?
I just wanna, I'm sorry, I have another meeting at eight-thirty, so I will have to be right at the planned eight o'clock time. And I just wanted to go on record saying that I, I, I'm really hopeful that, um, we implement the program where it is successful.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we're following the right procedures of how course implementation is usually done.
Yeah.
We're putting it back into the building's hands. So that's just something that I want us to stay focused on, that we, we, we have to follow processes that's already in place.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate that you gave sort of that, um, new course proposal process and as a board, we just have to make sure that that process is being followed and we're not overstepping what our boundaries are and sort of taking away that power from buildings. Because I think the program is, I mean, buildings know it's approved, it's on the books. Let them work on implementing it and getting the students to the table.
I do think though, there needs to be that discussion is, how many students?
Yeah.
Because I am hopeful too, I'm hopeful that, you know, we have so many kids that, you know, we're gonna have to hire three teachers. But talking with the people at the building level, they're not that optimistic, I would say. And we, looking at our 4H numbers you mentioned, I asked about them, we only have twenty-five high school kids, seventeen junior high kids, we're in 4H. So we don't have that, I guess, group of kids that are typically in this and so we're gonna need to do a lot of marketing and I think bringing kids to the conference will be a great start.
Well, yeah.
So we'll look for some, maybe some business support to help fund some kids going to the conference. But I think we need to have a, a target that you guys think is appropriate to say, "We need this many kids in order to start this program."
And we usually set the target or the committee?
Yeah, I mean, I can come back with a committee.
I'd say that, I'd say that that's something for the committee to discuss and to work and I'm assuming with, when the committee, the committee works on that, there's gonna be building personnel and, and you and Matt will be there and, and that type of a thing and we can, we can look at it, uh, from, from that point. But, uh, in, in Lone Tree, it's a, it's the largest student activity. And, you know, uh, only, only four of them live on a farm. So, uh... So like I say, the leadership opportunities, and like Steve said, specifically for females students, I don't think we have anything that even comes close to it. So I, like I say, I'm a passionate supporter of it and everything like that, and I look forward to the committee working on that. But I'd be reluctant right now putting a hard, fast, make-or-break schedule on this course, especially when one has gone through that didn't have any discussion from us in any great number, that requires a significant amount of material input going into, that may be considered a huge success if there's seven kids in. So that's why I'd say, I'd say that this is something that the committee should work on. And I agree, too, the alignment of our curriculum and everything that way. That's a bigger discussion, especially with our career technical going forward, that we have to make sure that we're optimizing and that from seventh, from junior high going up, that. And the numbers you were using for construction, was that including junior high students?
For 4H?
No, for manufacturing, or you were talking about construction?
No, that was the industrial tech numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, that was just secondary, that was just high school, sorry, 9 through 12.
So you said we had 200 kids that were in manufact, that were in-
Some kind of course.
Right.
Yep.
But what, could you please repeat what the category you stated?
So in industrial technology.
In industrial technology.
Right.
So that's encompassing auto, ACE?
Yep.
Project Lead the Way?
Not Project Lead the Way.
Is none of the man, is none of the engineering courses out at the Kirkwood Center?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, I would say the committee should decide, and I do, I want to give it a chance to succeed, so I don't want to be like 24 kids, so the first year, we're done. I mean, I just think that's not giving it a chance, because some of this is going to be word of mouth. People need a lot of education, our community, clearly from a lot of the emails we got, there's a huge misunderstanding of ag, just ag. It's like farming. It's like, I mean, it's a hu, I mean, the opportunities are way broader than what the feedback I got criticizing this, didn't have a lot of knowledge, I didn't think, or didn't express it as far as the huge industry that ag is. I mean, even in our, just in Johnson County, it's probably the fourth largest. I mean, obviously, healthcare and education are the biggest. But ag is huge, even in a pretty urban county like Johnson County. So I think, I hope that we're making folks aware of, and frankly, these jobs that ag provides, a lot of these aren't outsourcable jobs. And so I think, you know, just as we're really preparing our kids for the 21st century, and I think, you know, Phil brings this up a lot, you know, how many AP courses we have, and if we're really honest about what is it really doing for our kids? It gets them college credit, and it's good, and it teaches them a lot of content.
They take the test and pass the test.
If they take and pass the test.
It's not just taking the class.
Right, yes. If they take and pass the test, and if they then decide to go to college. So, and that, we are spending how many millions of dollars? I mean, if we want to use the quick math of it's 90,000 per teacher, how many millions of dollars are we spending on AP compared to something that may actually, you know, which, kids, people want AP. So sometimes, just because they want it, doesn't mean, but just because they want it, doesn't mean that the people who are looking at the projections and where the job market is going, it doesn't necessarily mean, oh, this is, because do people, you know, we think, you know, we want our kids to go to college if that's right for them, and we're also saying, "You're going to trade in 40 to 80,000 dollars of debt," and I don't know that the, you know, there's numbers out there that it's still worthwhile, but I think those numbers aren't as obvious as they used to be. Where it was like a true slam dunk, that your college degree is going to equal this much more income over your lifetime or satisfaction. That's changing nowadays. I mean, that's changing pretty rapidly with debt.
Yeah.
I'm glad you mentioned the critics, because one of the things we should be a little bit concerned about is the rural-urban divide in Iowa, and it's showing its ugly head again. And you're seeing it with concern about infrastructure spending, state universities. There are people in rural Iowa who are looking at things going on in Iowa City, and they're wondering why they continue to support some of the things here. And reaching out with an ag program might not be a bad thing to do right now.
So are we, I want to make sure I'm understanding what we're agreeing to, that the committee is going to take next steps? Is that right in terms of-
Yeah, that we would draw this implementation plan, so that we would have a committee that would get together here in the spring and the summer and start working on some of these details.
Okay.
And then propose the course and the program of studies, and then look to see student registration next January.
Okay.
I'm going to finally jump in and get some thoughts on that. I, this is a nice way to set it up to succeed, and I'm optimistic that you're going to have plenty of enrollment for it. I really do think it has a lot to offer. But I'm also pragmatic, and I know that we have budget constraints, particularly 2019 is not going to be, or the fall of 2018, 19 is not going to be real pretty. So pushing this back here, probably not a bad thing either. In fact, I wouldn't be too upset if we got to pass the next year, which is also a pretty bad budget here. That being said, I think we, we need to at least discuss, whether it's the committee or whatever, an enrollment number. I would like some clarity, I think Paul was actually asking a question earlier, like, what does this mean when it talks about a minimum number? Is it to have a section? Is it, do I need 15 at each high school to then have a section at each, 24, whatever the number is?
Right, right.
And is that true if it's a teacher that's moving around, or? It is, it's a very specialized thing, right? And I'm looking at it in, from the lens of, if you've hired a teacher to teach this very specialized thing, and they're moving around from school to school, maybe you can get away with some smaller numbers because you've hired them, but maybe they're not full-time. But that's some of the thoughts, I think, I guess if the committee's going to kind of look at that and figure out what that number is.
And-
It's not, I see it being a little bit different than normal, but following the process, too. I think we're all feeling very acutely what happens when you don't follow the process to get something on the curriculum. That was a pretty, pretty rough meeting, you know, as we were bombarded with the repercussions of not following the process. So I am on board with following the process, because I think that's a way to ensure that we're going to succeed. But I don't know that it's, it's a very kind of a niche thing, and maybe it is a little bit different than some other courses.
One thing that's going to give you some insurance there is that anyone that should consider hiring for that position would also have a science certification and could step in any number of science positions also.
Right. And John, we have had those discussions in the subcommittee, too, that, along those lines of, would it be one instructor going around and that type of a thing? So it, yeah, it's, we're thinking about it. The one last thing, and I'll add, I'll put in on this, and then, you know, we just had a discussion about how we talked, you know, things got kicked down the road and everything like that. And I have been a huge advocate for current technical education ever since I started coming to attending the board meetings. And in an eight-year process, this is the first really new curriculum we're introducing. And I have never forgotten a parts delivery person for one of my suppliers coming into my building one time when I had a board sign out front, and he said, "So you run it for school board?" I said, "Yeah." And he's talking, so, you know, what do you, what do you believe in? I didn't really want to talk to him. So I said, "Well, I'm trying to work on, one of my big passions is current technical education." He says, "Well, you know, I was going to take the home building program, but they only allowed it for seniors, and it was done away with the year before I was a senior." And I never forget, you know, that what that might have changed in his life had he had that. So, you know, I think all the concerns shared by the board and everything are very valid and important, but I think that, you know, you never get that opportunity back. And I'm, I think we have to, you know, stay on task. In the 19, 20 year, if we roll it out and it's, and we get a chance to get students in and go forward with it, I think that's fantastic, but that educational opportunity is limited for the students that we have in. And that's, that's all I'm going to add on that.
So I have just a process question. So to Janet's question of what are we really working on here? We're working on the ag education process. You've got in here a new course proposal process, but that is not what we're approving.
Right.
Okay. That's just a proposal.
Information.
Yeah. Okay, because I was going to say, this is different, and I'm not saying I disagree with it, I just don't want it to be assumed that that's now the accepted process, because I feel like there would need to be a little more time and discussion put into it. So this is just something you're proposing going forward. Does this need to be made policy? Does this need to go through, does this need to be gone through due process, or?
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be made policy. It's just really trying to delineate what our typical process is.
And it's a revision-
This is what you do today.
It's a revision of what we currently do. So this is already one of the administrative guidelines that we follow. So what I asked Diane and the group to do was just take a look at it and determine whether or not there were any material changes that needed to be made. There weren't any significant changes to it that they saw, just some clarification of some things that were already being done, but that weren't in the language of the current administrative guideline.
The one thing I would add to it is that it does say that recommendations are made by the curriculum review committee. Occasionally, the outside, outside of that, it would come from building administrators. So I think it was really great when the students came to us with a request. It didn't follow the right process-
Right.
-but I wouldn't want that not to be able to happen again, if students identify something that they want, even if the building administrators, because when we discussed ethnic studies, the building administrators were not necessarily supportive of having a course. And so I wouldn't want to have that not be an option going forward. I don't know if-
But they'd bring a recommendation to a venue, whether it's to us, I mean, they might go to the building, if they get stymied at the building, they might come to the district office, or they might come to the board. But then we would have it go through the curriculum review committee, and that new course would come back through the process from the curriculum review committee.
Okay. Okay. I just, you know, again, I don't want them, students, to lose hope that something that they have an interest in is going to be caught up in a bureaucratic process that they're not going to-
We've got some damage control still to do on the ethnic studies thing. I mean, at least maybe closing the loop, and it just, it was, it was, the process and the set of expectations and how we worked our way through it, and that horrible last board meeting was just, it was just bad. Sorry to be so blunt about it, but I agree that we've probably left a bad taste in students' mouths with how that was all handled. So we need to try to overcome that. And be clear, that's not the way we're going to do this.
In one words, we have with all, any elective future offerings, is that we have a limited number of opportunities for these electives, and as we bring in more, that, you know, makes vice lives smaller.
That's right.
And that's why I'm a proponent for taking some of these career trade and technical courses outside of the regular school schedule, something such as construction. We taught that in the summer during the construction season. That would eliminate the competition for other coursework.
So I think we need to move on. I think the committee's got the next steps, and we'll see, get an update from the committee or the task force, sorry, and bring that back to the board when you've got your next set of recommendations. Is that, am I capturing that right?
Yeah, and I guess when I'm talking about a committee, too, I'm not talking necessarily about the group that originally met. We need to have people, more people representative of the district, I guess, teachers and-
Yep. And you would take the lead in crafting that group, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll work with Matt on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Thank you, thank you for your input tonight. Appreciate it very much. Next item, board agenda priorities and timelines. So we are a very ambitious board. We have lots and lots and lots of things that we want to accomplish, and clearly, we're not going fast enough for any of us. And so I think one of the things that might help us is how we structure our time to gain most efficiency in how we tackle issues, make sure we are clearly identifying on our agenda, what's discussion, what's action. We clearly have said, even in a board norm, that we value work session this kind of time, and we want to make sure that we create enough space for us to be able to have work session time before nine or 10 o'clock at night. And so the idea came up of trying to structure, and this came, I mean, this is IASB material, I think we had some of those materials out there, Steve, that, you know, that we could build upon, some practices that they delineate. But the idea is to take the first board meeting, the second Tuesday, and use that for more of the healthy discussion and presentation, and that's going to be the more time-consuming, lengthy meeting. But then very intentionally make the fourth Tuesday shorter, condensed, not the long presentation, so that we could have good time set aside for work sessions on equity and balancing schools and whatever, you know, we need to be discussing. And so that was really a primary impetus. I think a second impetus was to, I mean, this, I felt strongly about this, we talked a little bit about it at P&amp;G, was to be very intentional about discussion items, being very intentional based on that, taking some extra time for a work session to make sure that before we vote as a board, we all have a chance to have our questions answered and the additional information brought forward. And so then, once we feel comfortable that our questions are answered, then we agree, we're ready to vote at the next board meeting. And in this case, we're trying to get those action items kind of collected up in the fourth Tuesday, but we can, we've got the latitude to put action items in any board meeting. But it's, but it's intentionally not, not going into a board meeting and having a presentation item become an action item without everyone kind of understanding that we've been through, kind of the due diligence and the process for that. So, so those were kind of the two main drivers, making sure we have time to get to our work session, and then being very intentional about when we're ready to vote. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at the sample agendas for the second and fourth Tuesdays, what questions you might have. I'm hoping this can help us organize our time more effectively.
And just maybe I'll chime in. Kim and I have had lots of conversation with the folks at the IASB over the past few weeks about this. They had some really good suggestions for us, so some things you'll see in there are things like the items withdrawn from the consent agenda now falls right after you do the consent agenda, so if there's something that you-
I wondered why that didn't happen.
I know, it was really weird at the very end, it's so disconnected.
Well, and then you forget, which item is it, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So that was one of the things that they shared with us. Public hearings, we always had those at the beginning, always felt a bit disjointed.
It's weird, you know, now we're here, and no one's-
Yeah.
People are still milling and talking in the crowd.
Right, and so that was, that was another suggestion from them as they put that in there. Paul is the chair of P&amp;G, one of the things that they suggested was that you actually have policy review. We talked to them about that. Not every district has a policy and governance committee, so sometimes they're actually doing that review work that we do in P&amp;G right at the table.
I know.
Yeah, my eyes did the same thing yours did. So we talked to them about that, and they said, "Probably still a good idea to have a placeholder in there on a monthly basis as a reminder that what you do in P&amp;G then comes back for approval, so that there's kind of a standing place for it that's separate from the other items on the agenda." So we left that piece in there, too. We talked to them about some of the things that we do, they're maybe a little bit unique that don't fit in with things that they had on their agenda, like our liaison reports and our legislative update, and they talked about where those would fit on the agenda here. So what we did was, everything that's on our current agenda is still on here, it's just reordered based on their feedback to us about what helps a moving, a meeting move along more effectively and where things ought to lie on the agenda. So everything that you see on the draft agenda would have been on the agenda anyway. It's really the order and the flow, and that was their input to us as they looked at, what do we do and what do they recommend?
And time limits.
They did talk about that. They also talked about a template for presentations. So we've got Kristin working on a slide deck that we can share with others via PowerPoint or Google to say, "Here are your slides that you get, you know, hello and welcome. Here's what we're going to talk about, here's the three things we want to talk about. Thank you very much for your time." So hopefully, we don't have presentations that drag on for a half an hour, and not that they're not of interest and value to all of us, but given the overall construction of your meeting, that might not be what you want a half an hour on. So you'll also see that we put a purpose section at the front end of the- So you'll also see that we put a purpose section at the front end of the, actually, you won't see it on the agenda. You see it when you open up board docs on there, that shares this information so that people in the audience that are looking at this know that a presentation is supposed to look like this. We also delineated, and again, this was based on some of that conversation with IASB, about where do things go? So after a presentation, okay, are we done? Thank you very much. Time to move on. Is this something that should go to a discussion at a further board meeting? Should this go to a work session? Is this something we wanna take action on? So it gives you some, some place to go with it. It's not just standalone entertainment. It's what do you do with this when you're done with it?
One question I have is, when we have Appendix Nine, actual plans?
Yes. Those would wind up being an action item then. So when you've got a vote on that, it goes right to the action item. And then there may be some things on Appendix Nine that you're like, hey, wait a minute, I wanna talk about that more. Great, pull that one out, drop it into the items that have been withdrawn from the consent agenda.
So the proposal is to just put Appendix Nine consistently in the consent agenda?
Except for things that require detailed action from the board, and then those will go in the action items.
And so actually, I think this is great, because then ideally, we would get that information the first meeting, and we wouldn't vote on it till the next meeting.
Sure, yeah, 'cause it could be...
So if there's building plans, we would then have time to...
Go to presentation, then go to action, yeah. And, and I love our architects. Make sure you note that. But, you know, make sure that, okay, you know, you have this much time for your presentation. Go.
Yep, I mean, they're passionate.
I understand that. Everybody's passionate about the part of the elephant that they see. I get that. But balance.
Yeah.
And we used to have plans always at the ESC.
Yes.
Is there any possibility, and they usually give us three plans, right?
They usually do, yeah. I had to go back and look at that.
And they're, they're ending up, and, you know, I think, you know, it's great we can go to the, to the physical plant and review them, but I know in just my travels, the ESC is more on my glide path. And if they're there and I can just make a quick review of them at the ESC, it would be easier that way.
I'm sure we can make that work.
Especially if we're going to, to this, and I, and I think that that, that is a step in the right direction, having the presentation and then the vote coming after it. The only, the only concern I have, and essentially, is you're getting to the point where you're saying that you're gonna have things on the agenda that cannot be acted upon. Or everything, I mean, everything still on the agenda is actionable, whether you act on it, whether you choose to or not.
There's nothing against the rules, though. You take an action when you're not saying you're going to. I think expectation is a big...
Well, no, if that's what it is going forward, that's fine. But there will, there will be, if you have an action meeting, it's the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So your first meeting, and let's say, let's take a hypothetical, the student course that didn't happen, that's on the first meeting. Well, on the agenda. And there might have been a possibility to make an action that night that could have corrected something, but then you have, have said now, it's gotta be two weeks from now.
Janet said that it could be changes.
I think we can change. I think for me, the thing is, going into a meeting and seeing what the intentions are, we're intending this to be a presentation, or we're intending this to be an action. Anything that's on there as an action item as part of the agenda, I think we need to be comfortable that we agree that's an action item. But things that are presentation items, if we, to your point, at the end of that discussion, we as a board say, what do we do with this next? Are we so comfortable that we're ready to vote and approve this? Okay, great. Let's, let's on the fly change it from a presentation to an action and go ahead and vote. If we say, oh, we need a work session, or oh, we need whatever the next steps are, I mean, we as a board can make those calls. I think it's more about setting the expectation very overtly going into the meeting that this, we're expecting to vote on these things. We're not expecting to vote on these other things. We're expecting to have a conversation. If we agree as a board, we're ready to vote based on that, then we can make that call real time.
And I'm a big proponent of the three readings thing as well, so essentially, we're getting into essentially a two reading?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, it's like a two reading. It slows it down. It gives you time to process. And I think it's gonna feel a lot better at the meeting to, yeah, just be like, oh, I'm gonna have some time to think about this and on the spot under the camera.
And the community too, because let's face it, many times, the things for the community, they don't, it's not on their radar until they read about the next day in the paper what happened, and then it's like, what? How did that sneak by us? So...
It's transparent process. People know what to expect.
And the other thing is it allows administration to understand our expectations. So if we're, if you know, we're not voting on this until we've gone through this process, then you're gonna have to give it to us this much further ahead, and you know that ahead of time. So you're not frustrated because we haven't acted on it when you wanted a decision.
And if, if something comes in as a presentation and you say, boy, you know, we need to talk about that more. We'd like to either bring it back for discussion, or we'd like to put it on a work session. Then it's our opportunity to say, what questions do you have? So that when we show up at the next work session or the next discussion topic, that we can get those questions answered for you, hopefully, prior to the meeting. So we can say, here are all the questions. We collected them all. We got them all answered. Here they are. That ought to accelerate the conversation when we come together the next time, because you'll already have all those answers in front of you. One of the things that IASB said that we have the luxury, that many boards don't, is we meet twice a month. A lot of boards don't do that. They meet once a month. So they said, you know, you ought to be able to have a nice cyclical process that allows you to move through this relatively smoothly.
Now, there might be times where you need something faster, and I think that there could be exceptions made. But if, but if we do this generally speaking, I think the biggest thing is not feeling like we have to make a decision right now, not being presented with those items when, if we don't approve it, then somebody thinks we no longer agree with the project or something. It's, it's giving us time.
I think it works well on both.
And so we put it on the work session. We talk about it. We know that it might not be acted on until a month after the work session, but everybody knows that.
Right. So there's adequate time on both sides, right? Get questions asked, get them answered, think through it. Yeah.
I like the system of, that you got here with the kind of discussion meeting and then an action meeting. I think that works really well. I think we need to be pretty intentional, say, in December, when we're only gonna have one meeting. Like, how do we handle that? Are we gonna change what the first one in January is, or, like, get ahead of it, right? 'Cause the whole point of this is, everybody has an expectation of what's happening at a meeting. So we should figure out, okay, those months that we're only having one, like March, you know? Okay, how are we gonna change it, you know? Ahead of time, so everybody still has the same expectation.
And one of the things that I did is I took what's the old Appendix Three MIS process, which was kind of a mess, and went through with the administrative team and said, what are all the things that you need to present to the board? What are all the things you need to discuss with the board? What are all the things that need action from the board? And how can we work to put the like-type things together? So that you can have those, whether they're presentation or conversation simultaneously. How do we put some of the, the things that need to be acted on together in a way that makes a little bit more sense? And we were actually working on that this morning, so that it does two things. It allows the administrative team the opportunity to say, here's the things we need to tell you, right? And, and put them together in a, in an appropriate format. But then also give you lots of spaces aboard to say, but here's the things we wanna know about, right? They're not things that show up annually. This is something that we need to know about right now, because it's pertinent to something we're working on. And, and now there's room in the agenda to put those things in, so that they're not stacked on top of each other. We don't have the meeting that needs to run till four in the morning in order, 'cause we gotta get through this stuff type of thing. So we've been working on that for a couple of months now, and I think it's almost ready to go. And when it is, I'm gonna get that pushed out to you. We got two more things I want.
That was gonna be my next point, is that for us in our goal setting even, to say, these are the things we wanna cover this year, so that you know ahead of time.
And then you look at it and say, hey, wow, on the, can't read the tiny print here.
It's spaced out.
On the second Tuesday in October, we know you get, we're gonna get the class size update, the School Improvement Advisory Committee report, the annual progress report, the annual tech update, the annual financial health report, and the certified annual enrollment. We're gonna get all that. Well, and we probably don't wanna put a bunch of other stuff on that one. But, boy, I look ahead to the next one, and, you know, there's not a lot on there. Well, there's a lot of space in there then for us collectively to figure out what fits there. So we should have this, there's like only two other things that I'm trying to get nailed down, and when I do, I'll get that sent out to you right away.
So are we comfortable using this new agenda format for next Tuesday?
Are we gonna read the mission statement at every meeting?
It's too long.
Okay, and I, just so you know.
Sorry.
If you look at the IASB board meeting example, there's a couple of things. We literally, we took everything off of there. So one of them was the roll call thing, and one of them was this idea about the mission statement. We actually talked to them, and they said, well, a lot of boards don't video their board meetings. So roll call is the audio cue for people that are listening on the taped version to know who's there. We don't need to do that. So we had it on, we took it off. Mission statement, we can certainly take that off.
You could, could you have Kevin just scroll it before we start?
We could certainly do that. Oh, absolutely.
Just have that, instead of have the blank screen with ICE, just have our mission statement there.
Sure.
We can do that.
You work with him on that?
Yeah, it'll be Kevin for very long.
Although I like the idea of pledge allegiance before it. That's just me.
We just record Phil holding a sign with a mission statement dancing out of it.
People would come to watch that.
Everything except the dancing, Sean, I was with you.
He would bring a crowd.
I bring a crowd always, Janet.
So we're good with this? That's fantastic. We'll, we'll give it a try and then refine as we go. Yes?
All right.
Okay, last topic is calendar religious holidays.
Yes, so I'll...
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, please.
I would suggest starting it in April meetings and putting on the March meeting. This is how we're going to do it.
Oh.
That's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good. Okay, I think that's a good idea. So we'll need to add that to the agenda for next Tuesday. That's a good idea.
We won't add all the attachments here, but we'll add, we'll add a couple of them. So the religious holidays one, just a quick update for you on that. I know there's been some conversation. I know you've got lots, lots of emails from folks about that. So one of the things that we are doing is we are working with the Consultation Religious Communities, which represents religious leaders from throughout the district, to understand from them which holidays they consider to be most important, so that we can then share that information with the calendar committee, so that they can take that into consideration as we move forward and establish the calendar for the district. And Kingsley's in the process of gathering that information from them. It's a pretty wide-ranging group. The Imams in there, the rabbis in there, multiple Christian denominations have folks in there. The head of the Baha'i community in Iowa City's in that group. So I think we'll get a pretty good representation from them about what we ought to do. Just anecdotally for you, and I know I shared this with JP, you know, we've struggled for years with the Mississippi Valley Conference, with our football games on Friday, in particular, as they intersect with the Jewish High Holidays. Some years, it's an issue. Sometimes, depending on where it happens, those happen after the football season, but it's been a challenge for us. And we've always tried to get the City West game. So for those of you that remember when the boot game was on a Thursday night, there's a reason it was on a Thursday night. It was so that we could then not have the game on Friday night. We've struggled with our friends at the Mississippi Valley Conference to give us the latitude to do that. Obviously, with three high schools now, it's a little more problematic, 'cause you can't have all those games on the same evening. But that's something that we've, we've worked to try to accommodate. So we try to be pretty aggressive about making sure that we've got accommodations built into the schedule, and I think this will give us an opportunity to expand that dialogue.
Steve, just to follow up on maybe some of the emails that we've got. How fine a line do you have to walk to keep that separation?
Well, there's a couple of ways to go about that, and one of them is to look at how that intersects and what days you choose to have off. And then the other thing that we're, we think we need to take a look at is, what are federally recognized holidays, and how does that intersect with the way we build our calendar? And, and that's the conversation we're gonna have with the calendar committee as we move into that.
You know, some of the emails talk about other states having totally absorbed the religious holidays into their calendars. I haven't gone and investigated. How much validity is that? Because it seems like we couldn't put on our calendar, there's no school this day because it's Eid. Like, that seems really against separation of church and state.
So if you, if you go out on the board website right now, you'll see this calendar out there, and it has three different classifications of days. First and last day of class, the end of the trimester, and days on which there is no school. The calendar that we published for a long time was really a staff calendar more than a parent and student calendar. I mean, in all honesty, parents don't care if this is your optional TQ day. What the heck does that mean to them? They just wanna know whether there's no school or school. So we cleaned that up, so that's the public calendar that people see that's out there. And then the, the staff calendar is the one that has all those things. This is a professional development day. This is a record-keeping day. This is a... 'Cause they mean different things to staff, but they really don't mean anything different to the, the parents out there. So we've cleaned it up so that it's easier for parents to read. And, and we specify on here simply that there is school or no school. It's not, there isn't school because that's MLK Day. It doesn't say that on here. It just says there isn't school that day. It doesn't say that there's no school because it's Memorial Day in May. It just says there's no school that day. So that way, if the calendar committee looks at it and decides that there are days that they want to choose to have no school, they will choose to have those as no school days, and they will be represented as no school days. They won't be represented as, that's not a school because of this reason.
I'm just trying to, you know, as a bleeding heart, I would totally wanna give everybody their religious holidays off. But as a practical standpoint, that just doesn't work. And, and, you know, we specifically had the kids come and advocate to get Eid off, and it's a floating target, right? It moves all over the place, and that makes it more logistically hard to figure out on a year-to-year, or we're trying to do a calendar three years out. I don't know if they're stated when those holidays, like, I don't know. It's something you can calculate that?
Yeah, you can. You can look, you can look pretty far forward and figure those out.
It seems like this year, you know, I think like the next couple of years, Eid doesn't even fall within the school year. So then it's, okay, this next year it does. Do we have to create an extra day off to accommodate that? We wouldn't have had a day off some other year just to try and accommodate it.
But we've got a lot of flexibility to do that now.
We do, and I just...
And I think that, I think that's the conversation that we want the calendar committee to have.
I was gonna say, that's the kind of thing that, that the board hasn't decided in the past. I mean, I guess we could say, we could make a statement of we value all holidays or something. I don't know. But the calendar committee, who is built, which is built with teachers and administrators and all that, they pretty much make the decisions.
Right, and, and so what we wanna do, and if you, if you looked at the old calendar, there was always a second page to it where we worked really hard with the Consultation Religious Communities to understand what all the holidays were during the year, whether they're high holidays, low holidays, and get them all listed on there. And we did that because, to the extent possible, you wanna try to avoid having events on those evenings. Now, that can be tough to do, 'cause there's five million events going on in the district. But to the extent possible, let's try not to do things on these holidays, because you're going to significantly impact kids. That's why we tried to have the battle to boot on Thursday for those years, because we don't want kids to have to choose, do I celebrate with my family, or do I do my school event? And so that's why we're really conscious of trying to make sure that everyone in the district knows when those days are, whether it's teachers, coaches, advisors, whatever it is. So we'll keep doing that, because I, I think it is our responsibility to try to make sure that kids don't have to make that choice. So where we can do that, we wanna do that. Now, whole days off of school, I think that's a conversation that the calendar committee needs to have. They may bring back a calendar recommendation that you as a board look at and go, yuck, I don't like that, for a variety of reasons. Well, then, we can give them a charge to go back and reexamine that if that's the case.
Yeah, Sean, there are a lot of districts, like where I grew up, there, you were always gonna have Good Friday off. They didn't say it was for that, every single year, and that's another moving holiday. And it was just, but that's what the community, that was the, I'm sure if you go to Pella, that's the, the community has that. That's their value, and that's their people. And we are an elected body by this community that happens, you know, to...
Right, and I think it's important too, that everybody know that by, and, and my daughter would always go to Good Friday services. And we were fortunate enough that they would be late enough in the day that she could finish school, and one of the parents, one of us would save a spot in the pew, and the other one would rush over to St. Mary's and go in and, and take care of mass. But there was, even if it didn't do that, there would not have been a penalty as far as it's an excused absence. And I think it's very important that everyone know that, and we didn't even really talk about Buddhism, but if you go into Buddhism... talk about Buddhism, but if you go into Buddhism, we're not going to have school at all, because, I'm being facetious, but, and that's not a slight against Buddhists, but they have many holidays. And when I was talking with Father Steve about this, he says, well, you know, really, we'd like to, we'd like to have seven.
Yeah. We ask him for no more than five, wouldn't we ask him?
You're right. Yeah. And he says, well, no, we really should be doing seven. And I'm like, oh, my God, I'm trying to figure them out myself. And I didn't. But, and it is, like you say, depending on the area. First year I was down in Central America, in Central America, they close up on Wednesday for Easter. And you won't see anybody until Monday morning. So, it depends on the place. But, I was going through some books today, and I came across a very old paper that was talking about court bans, school Bible reading, and the Lord's Prayer. Can anybody give me the year that that happened? Paper should give it away.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
But it goes in here that is saying that, and it was an eight-to-one vote at the Supreme Court. And they were saying that, you know, government, meaning the schools, have to be very careful. And when you take a day off, what are we saying to the, to not only, to the people that don't practice that religion, don't even recognize religion? So, the believers, the non-believers, or whatever. So, yeah, it's a tough one. But I think the biggest thing we need to do is make sure that everyone recognizes that no matter what, how you call God, you can practice it in our school district, and you don't have a penalty for attendance or anything that way.
And maybe just one last on that one. So, just so you know, that's something that at the beginning of the year, we push that calendar out that shows all the holidays on there with a big reminder to all staff in the district. So, we want to make sure that they have it. It's easily accessible. They know where to find it. In case they lose the copy, we send to them. And then, what our expectations are for them as you go through the year, and how you accommodate students regardless of what they believe, and the depth of their belief, and how many days they need to be off in order to make sure that they're able to accommodate their family needs.
Is the calendar committee aware of the student presentations that we-
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, hopefully, they will factor that into their decision-making. Anything else? I think we're done. Is there a motion? All in favor?
I wish the entire evaluation system-
Stop. I know. I think it did.